All right. Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks for coming out tonight. It's 7:51. This is our October 28th meeting. We're called to order. Please rise and fudge the flag. Thank you, everyone. Angela, recall, please.
Here. Laura Hauck.
Here.
Amy Hi. Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum. Tony Hile.
Here.
Saba Alzad.
I'm here. And just want to note that Amy is out of the country and let us know ahead of time.
Madam President, I'd note for the record that we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:45 with regard to real estate acquisition as well as a personnel matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. All righty. Some really fun news here. We have a proclamation to recognize our fastest man and woman in Bridgeport, so I'll go ahead and read these proclamations. In recognition of the fastest people in Bridgeport, whereas on October 4th, 2025, Bridgeport Borough held its eighth annual Bridgeport 5K race. The race included residents and non-residents of Bridgeport Borough and took runners on a scenic tour of our beautiful town. Whereas Bridgeport Borough resident Caitlin Lutz finished the 5K race in a time of 22 minutes, 4.61 seconds, and placed 14th overall in the race. Whereas Bridgeport Borough resident Drew Olensky finished the 5K race in a time of 18 minutes, 46.88 seconds, and placed second overall in the race. Now, therefore, I, Beth Jackseer, Mayor of...
Whoops. I didn't realize. I did not realize we were mayor.
I'm going to walk these over to Mayor Beth.
Apologies, folks. Yeah, so, yes, if we could, please, if Mayor, if Mayor Jackseer would be so kind as to come to the podium, and Caitlin and Drew, if you could come up there as well, that'd be great. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Drew.
Thank you.
It doesn't look like Caitlin's here, so thank you, Mayor. Thank you, President Alzad.
Yeah, I was going to say, she was here. We just didn't see her.
All right, next up here, we have the presentation of the 2025 Bridgeport 5K beneficiary checks to the Bridgeport Fire Department and the Upper Marion Area Community Cupboard. It's been a hectic week, guys. It's okay. Be patient with us.
Oh, if we could, if we could please have each of the beneficiaries come up. We can start with the Upper Marion Area Community Cupboard. And then members of the Upper Marion Fire Department, or Bridgeport, Bridgeport. It is, guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, you know, I'm gonna, yeah, yeah, it's. I'm, I'm, I'm.
It's coming.
I'm blaming, I'm blaming the season of the witch, guys. I'm sorry. The Bridgeport Volunteer Fire Company, please.
I'm gonna be here for my whole team. Thank you very much. I had to come up here, and I had to touch this mic. I had to, just for Mr. Bello.
We are very grateful to the Bridgeport Fire Department.
We also had a rough week, and so this is going to help replace some of the equipment that was lost during the fire. Yeah, we lost, but it's, it is a big deal, but more importantly, people survived, so we did our job, so thank you.
You guys rock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. We're wrapping up Booport, believe it or not. The month is almost at an end. We've had a fantastic month. I believe over 30 events, if I'm counting correctly, throughout the entire month. The vast majority were free for the kids. I really want to start off with kind of just thanking all of our sponsors. I know we've kind of sprinkled thanked everybody throughout the month, but I just want to do a real quick list here for our bronze sponsors. We had Susie Jo's Donuts, Norristown Chimney, Attilio, Fleming Wander, Morello Amusements, I Fly, Angelo's Cleaners and Cleaning, Allen Nevada Accounting Services LLC, John Kennedy Concha Hockin, Bridgeport Veterinary Hospital, Dimitris Market, King Shooting, De Stefano's Premier Martial Arts, Belly, Riley McGurry, and De Pippo Law Firm, Three Hill Credit Union, Serve Pro, King of Prussia, Turley Insurance, Reach, Screwballs, Oaks Health, Oak Street Health, Four Street Cafe, Bang Cookies, and Ripe House. We also had Upper Marion Gymnastics and Dance as a part of our bronze sponsors. Our silver sponsors were GRW Plumbing and Heating, Pudlers Kitchen and Tap, The Depot Bar, Whisfuas Bank, and Bridgeport here, Bachi Funeral Home. And our gold sponsors were Kind Real Estate. And finally, our platinum sponsor was Moscaro. We had a bunch of donations from individuals and from companies. The companies specifically were City Works, Michaels, Lego Land, BTC Awards, Nona Rosa, Crazy Aaron's, Hers Redeemed Roofing, and the Alloy. And altogether, if I've counted correctly, it's over $35,000 in fundraising this year, which is phenomenal. Due to lots of different individuals. Thank you to the Booport Committee for putting in lots of hours. A lot of this was really awkward door knocking and phone calls and building relationships. But at the end of the day, I'll say it time and time again, local and, I mean, government in general doesn't work without our businesses, without the care of our businesses. I encourage everyone in Bridgeport to only go to these businesses from now on. Make sure you let them know that you're here for Booport. I'm happy to kind of share really quickly that a lot of these businesses have called us back saying that our flyers resulted in business. We had the roofer here from Redeemed Roofing run across the street and say, hey, did you hand out flyers today? And I said, yeah, it was my first day. And he said, I just got two roofs. People called me because they saw my name on the roof, you know, just on the flyer. So, you know, it's just great to kind of see that the work that we're doing kind of works hand in hand. We really try to promote these businesses day in and day out, and I really hope that our Booport community here supports them. So just wanted to thank them. Our Booport parade went out without a hitch. Very thankful to all of our vendors. I think it was, you know, 60 to 70 vendors. We had a really, really great drone show. But, you know, most importantly, the community showed out and showed up. We had thousands of people. We couldn't even count how many people were coming down the streets. We had tons of floats. Everyone had really beautiful creations, and we just had a really, really good time. So I just want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting that and the rest of the events. We had the Reach event this weekend. We had June Bugs event this weekend that was packed. I walked in, couldn't even get into the door because there were so many little girls dancing around and boys. And obviously, our bar crawl this weekend, that was phenomenal. Had to have been 300 people there, easily. You know, every, every single bar we went to was packed. We had a really good time, met our neighbors, met new friends, and just really enjoyed the space and what I see as the vision for future, for a future in Bridgeport here, where we're always, we have events to go to and places to walk to and new businesses to kind of enjoy, you know, attending. So I don't believe with a point. I just want to thank everybody, including our Booport Committee, the Council, Mayor, and our phenomenal staff, obviously, our police and fire departments for showing up that day and making sure that we were all very safe. Sorry if I'm forgetting anyone, but, you know, we just have a great team here. Yes, a public works. Without them, nothing would be possible. Thank you, Heather. They, I was with them this morning handing out more of the prizes. They have been phenomenal the entire, the entire, the entire month and beyond. So thanks, everyone, again. All right, we can move on to our item, first item here for council consideration. We have Resolution 2025-24 approving transfer of liquor license to 101 East Forest Street, Dino's Pizza and Pasta. Do we have a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Most of Mr. Shank, second from Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a zoning hearing board notice, Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. 3032 West Forest Street, Dermakira LLC. Do we have any context here we want to share? Are we good to move?
Would the applicants like to step forward to discuss the application?
Yep, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Joe Clement. I'm the applicant's attorney. To my right is Sonny Rocher. Sonny is the applicant's representative. We do not represent the property owner, to be clear. We only represent the prospective tenant. We are here with the property owner's permission, and we're kind of caught in a strange situation relative to what's going on with your zoning amendment for the neighborhood commercial district. If we apply the proposed parking requirements in the neighborhood commercial district as they are today, we need parking relief in order to have this particular use added to the other existing uses at that building. And I understand that building has assorted pests. I understand that. However, with respect to this applicant, if we were able to move forward under the new zoning, which I believe you have already advertised, and I think there's a hearing on the day before our hearing, that we would in fact not need that parking relief for the building as it exists. There are 72 parking spaces on that site today. I'm parked over there right now. Chief, don't hurt me. It's right over there. But there are over three dozen parking spaces open right now. If you add up all of the uses that are there right now, or the parking requirements for the uses right there that are allowed under the proposed zoning and the requirements for parking, we would need 56 spaces, including the spaces for Sonny's proposed use. And Sonny's use is going to be, hopefully, a dojo, a jujitsu dojo. There will be no more than 10 to 12 students at any one time in that dojo. There will be two basic classes, one for children right after school and one a little later in the evening for adults. This is not a massive commercial enterprise. That's really all that you can put in that 2,400 square foot space. So again, the maximum amount of parking that we would need under the new ordinance would be those 56 spaces. Even if you went up to the 120%, it would only be 68 spaces. So we're still quote unquote "overparked," if you will, under the new zoning code. So that's our ask. In fact, we don't need to go to this hearing if you pass your ordinance, I don't think. So we're really hoping and keeping our fingers crossed in that regard. When it comes to whatever's going to happen out there in the future with the second building and really have not talked much to the owner about that, I understand there will need to be something there from a parking perspective.
There's a legal argument here with regard to the history of this particular site concerning a contract between the borough and the developer. However, if council was inclined to see it your way under the new ordinance, would you accept as a condition that there would be no more than 10, 10 students? Or 12 students, whatever the number is that we agree upon? How many instructors would there be?
One instructor and a maximum of 12 students.
One instructor and a maximum of 12 students, and hours of operation? Would you accept as, as an additional condition that there be limitations on hours of operation?
The hours of operation, as they're proposed right now, are mostly during the week, Monday through Friday and after school into the early evening. There may be Saturday classes at some point, most likely in the morning and early afternoon, but that's what we would ask for and agree to.
What, what time would you conclude the classes during the week?
Monday through Friday, the classes will conclude at 9:00 PM. Saturday, the class would at most conclude at 1:30.
Okay. So if we created the condition that you would not have class during the week beyond 9:30, and on Saturdays beyond 2:00, that would be a condition that you would be willing to accept?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, I'll defer to you, but there are my thoughts.
And I'm, so my kids did martial arts for a little bit. And so sometimes there are parties, so I assume there could be some flexibility if that came up, a regular thing, reasonable. Do, is this a chain? Do you have other sort, is this, do you do anywhere else, or is this your first time doing it?
This is my first time.
Do you have a clientele already? Like when you start, do you think that you would fill up quickly? Or is it something where you're going to have to build up? Because we have a few people in town who participate in different martial arts studios, and it's great. My, like, my kids did it until 2020, and it was just, they couldn't, it was hard to do remotely. So I think it's a really healthy, positive thing. Just wanted to see what your plans were in terms of attracting people to come there so that it's successful.
Yeah. So, I mean, I've built programs all across the state of Pennsylvania already, right? No matter really where I went, I don't have a clientele in Bridgeport right now. But I have built a clientele in Warmminster, Quaker Town, Coopersburg, all those areas, and we've had a pretty good success. I was never the owners of, of those gyms. I was just helping out to grow programs. So, you know, I'll be doing the same, same exact thing in, in this area.
So that means that you yourself will probably not be running it then, day to day. It'll be other people?
I will be running it. Yeah, I would be inclined to support with the conditions. I don't know if we, if we want to belabor it too much longer, but I'm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is, this is Sonny's bet on himself. Let's be clear with that. That's really what he's doing here. So he's betting on the borough and he's betting on himself.
And I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Shank for a couple of reasons. One, the, like, especially with those restrictions, these are not spaces that will be used consistently. And I don't think you're going to be busy five days a week with full, anyway. And not, I hope you're successful, but it's just, you have, just some classes, you have eight kids, sometimes 10, you know, it's normal. And so this is the kind of thing that would might bring people in to use the restaurants in town. That's, that's a positive. And also, if you're not successful, though I hope you are, it's not a hard renovation for the next owner if that happens. It's not something where there's like ripping apart stuff and it's a big sell to the next person. Though I hope you are successful and it works. So are you making a motion?
Yeah, so this is, this is a motion to support the applicant with the conditions mentioned by Mr. Bello.
Well, let's back up a second.
Sure, sure, sure.
Are, are, are you going to withdraw your ZHB application?
I think we have to wait to see what, most likely, yes. We'll wait to see what happens on the 11th. We would withdraw the ZHB application.
Okay, so we would be granting, we would, this would be a motion to grant a UNO with the following conditions.
Conditional UNO, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to say that I'm not in favor of restricting all the time on Saturdays and Sundays. I understand that we also go to birthday parties. Then I think that's important for business growth. But I think that there needs, maybe worth a chat a little bit more.
Sure.
I don't want to just like say rules and then they have to have to deal with the consequences.
Absolutely. There has to be rational as well, but.
Is that something you anticipate doing? Or no? Like, what, can you give us an idea of like what kind of, I guess, programs you plan on implementing? So we have an understanding before we place rules around your timing?
Yeah, you just want the programs?
General idea of what you plan on doing, yeah. Like what, you're doing classes and that's it? Like, no?
Yeah, we're planning on doing classes. I would love to get involved with a lot of the schools in the area, you know? Maybe even doing seminars for the schools. I think that'd be great. Like, that's one of my major things that I'm doing, that I do right now, is I, I help mostly kids. I help a lot of adults and law enforcement, too, but my biggest thing is the kids, so.
No, we love that. Yeah, that's amazing. No, I was just saying, do you plan on throwing like birthday parties and things like that? Like additional kinds of events? I just want to understand, like, if you need additional time. Like 2:00 PM is around when birthday parties start a lot of times. So I just want to make sure we're not capping you then. You have to deal with the consequences.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are open to it, that's fine. Yes, go first.
I think the flexibility would be great. We could always come back before council, too. If we needed a little bit more flexibility, once we see what the parking demands really are and when those hours of operation would be.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I just, I just don't want to like randomly add rules and then hurt your business in the process. We want to make sure you thrive, and we're excited to collaborate with you. As you can see, the mass of, list of sponsors you guys heard earlier is true businesses around town that are really engaged. So, you know, excited to see you.
I, I think you nailed the issue. Where I was going with this as well is that you could always come back in and ask for more of an allowance. But we're just trying to make sure that there's not a problem over there. At some point in time, the five-pound bag is going to be full with the 10 pounds that's going in there. You know, so not you, but the owner has to, has to buck up at some point in time and face that reality. But certainly, what you're going to do is, it shouldn't be a problem there. And if you find a need for additional times of operation, additional numbers, we invite you to come back before council. We don't want to be unreasonable with you. It's not your fault, or the parking issue over there is not your problem only. So we appreciate it. Yeah, it's all this, right?
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve the UNO?
I'll make the motion.
With the conditions?
Conditions, yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve the UNO with conditions. Do you have a second?
That's fine. I'll, I'll second. Laura wanted to, Laura wanted to steal my.
I was already, I was already there, sorry.
Any additional comments from question, from council of the public?
Good luck. Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion to approve the UNO with conditions carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Welcome to town.
All right. Next up for council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-25 approving a grant request to the Transportation Alternative Set Aside, TASA, program for the creation of the Bridgeport Borough Spur Trail.
All right, and President Alzad, before council considers this resolution, part of our obligatory process in the grant application is to perform a public presentation of the plans. Okay, so the TASA, or Transportation Alternative Set Aside, program is a federally funded grant program that is administered on the state level by PennDOT. Our grant application, the Bridgeport Spur Trail Project, consists of a half-mile-long, 10-foot-wide, multi-function or multi-use trail that ideally would be utilized by not only pedestrians, but bikers as well. For those of you who were around back in 2016 when the county approached Bridgeport with trying to garner support for the notion of the Chester Valley Trail, at that point, the Bridgeport Loop Trail, as it was referred to by the county, was supposed to be part of, was supposed to be part of the overall Chester Valley Trail grant. However, things happened. I guess funding was not as, not what they originally thought. And ultimately, the Bridgeport Loop Trail was cut from the Chester Valley Trail's final plans. So I think that administration and elected officials still wanted to persevere moving forward after that. And at this point, we are now moving forward with submitting for funding for, to ultimately complete what was initially discussed a decade ago. The trailhead or the, the, the westerly end of the Spur Trail is going to begin right at the abandoned rail bed that begins, that begins on DeKalb Street and runs through the, through the spine into the commercial section of Bridgeport. Running through, behind Wawa, running behind Bridgeport Fire Company Number One, running behind and between the, the old Durlumber site, which is now Tube Methods, crossing over Green, and then ultimately Depot. As you can see here, this is, this is where it then comes behind Bridgeport Fire Company Number One and the, the parking lot of the aforementioned Fourth Street Marketplace. The applicants who were just in front of us for the ZHB request. It would then ultimately curve and rather than cross over Depot Street, as you can see there, there's a, there's a triangle right here where that abandoned rail bed continues. However, due to PennDOT regulations, they will not permit a trail crossing within 150 feet of a signalized intersection. So instead, cyclists and, or other pedestrians, trail users would need to turn down the sidewalk here, cross Depot, or, excuse me, cross Fourth Street, and then cross Depot, and then continue on along the trail. And ultimately, this trail would continue on behind the new, new River Point properties that are, that are along Fourth Street and Wafer Alley, and ultimately terminate here on the, the easterly side of the trail. Terminus would be on Ford, or, excuse me, yes, on Ford Street, just a few feet away from the Norfolk Southern Trail Crossing. And from there, we have about 400 feet of low-traffic-volume streets and sidewalks that then ultimately connect it to the trailhead that PRDC developed along the Schuylkill River Frontage that then runs back along the frontage of, of the Schuylkill Riverfront. And, excuse me, connects again up through the Chester, or through the Concha Hocken Brewery parking lot and back to the Chester Valley Trail. I think that, and I think that administration believes that this project provides a great diversion from the standard route of the Chester Valley Trail. It gives cyclists and hikers and bikers a reason to come through and visit our commercial corridor. It serves to beautify an abandoned rail bed that has sat fallow and vacant for probably close to 20 years. We are in, we are in conversations with Montgomery County Parks and Trails to ultimately have this rail bed easement deeded back over to Bridgeport Borough. And in addition to being, I think, a great piece of potential ecotourism for, for our commercial district, it beautifies, it cleans up, and adds safety and security features to an area that is off the beaten path currently in the borough, is frequently home to youthful nuisance-related type of actions and some other, you know, illicit activities. This would bring lighting, security, trash receptacles, full, full trail amenities through the heart of the borough. The estimated project at this point, the estimated project cost is somewhere in the vicinity of $650,000. However, this is a, this is a multi-year development, design, and approval process going through PennDOT's rather rigid review process. The TASA program actually would cover the entirety of the construction costs, and only the design costs would be incumbent upon the borough to, to foot the bill for. And if anybody recalls last, last meeting when we went through the capital funding requests, we have approximately 100,000 to 125,000 set aside in the, the capital funding request next year for a, a fully fleshed-out design of the Bridgeport Spur Trail. year for a fully fleshed-out design of the Bridgeport Spur Trail. So, application for this project is actually due on October 31st, this Friday, and to accompany that application, they also like to see a resolution from Borough Council endorsing and authorizing application to the project. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to field them. Otherwise, thank you for considering the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is wonderful. I think it's a great project, and hopefully it kind of goes through and we get to see a beautified space that, right now, isn't so, isn't, isn't pretty.
Yeah, 10 years ago...
It's all birds there right now. What's really... Yeah, it's all birds. I can't hear anything out there anyway.
So 10 years ago, when I was on council here, this got brought up as an idea, and I don't know if this program even existed then, but there was a lot of hope to do something there, and then for a variety of reasons, we weren't able to do it. I don't know if it was funding or approval, because we don't own it. So, like you said, Keith, a lot of things have changed, and for the safety reasons above all else, like that alone, plus the beautification, this is a no-brainer. It's, and the program is great for funding it. So I'll make a motion to approve the grant request.
I'll second. I'm also just really in favor of more bike and walking trails everywhere I go, and I know that, having run the cleanup days, that that area, you know, might look nice now, but that area, that stretch, you know, behind the shops there does really get, you know, it always needs a lot of attention every cleanup day back, back there. And I have, I know people who ride from, they do group bike rides from the art museum to go to Suzie Joe's. I don't know if they're still doing it now, but they used to do that, like, years ago. So just imagine all the people coming from the Schuylkill River Trail, Chester Valley Trail, from, you know, like, my husband's uncle rides from Elversen to come see us here. So there are more chances for people to come to Bridgeport on bike is only good. So that is my long-winded second.
Thank you, Megan. So we have a motion from Mr. House, second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-26, authorizing purchase of police patrol vehicle, New Holland Auto Group, $46,995,000. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Houck, second from Mr. House. Do you have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-27, authorizing transfer of funds from Borough of Bridgeport Bank Account to the Borough, to the Bridgeport Police Association Bank Account for the purpose of providing full ownership of fundraising proceeds currently held by the borough. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second from Ms. Schenck, second from Ms. Gundrum. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have authorization to pay the bills and salaries October 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Houck, second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Last year, we have a presentation, Mr. Chairman is going to give us for 2025-year end review, revenue versus expenditures, projections for 2026 budget. All you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, this is, this is part two of our annual budget presentation, as we historically do. So first, looking at general fund revenue, the 2025 budget was set at $6,347,500. Our actual revenues as of the end of September, our most recent completed monthly reporting, we are currently sitting at $6,807,992. Projecting this out to the end of the year, we're looking at approximately $7,531,587, which would be about $1.184 million over budget, which, one of the few times you can say over budget is a good thing. We are tracking to have more revenues than we originally anticipated. Looking at general fund expenditures for the 2025 budget, again, because we, as municipalities, must present a balanced budget annually, the expenditures also came in at $6,347,500. The actual, as of the end of September, is, was sitting at $4,746,880. Our 2025 year-end projection is actually right on the budgeted figure of $6,347,500. So there is negligible variance. In other words, we are on budget there. So when reviewing the projected surplus for the end of the year, you look at what we're projecting for revenues, 7.5 million and change, and the projected expenditures, 6.3 million and change. We're looking at a potential projected surplus of $1,184,017. This projected surplus equals 15.7% of, excuse me, of our 2025 projected revenues. Generally accepted surplus percentages typically range between 5% and 10%. Therefore, according to projected year-end figures, this year should exceed expectations. And please note, annual disclaimer, end-of-year surplus deficit projections are certainly not ironclad and are prone to fluctuation mitigating circumstances such as emergency expenditures or revenue shortfalls can always have an impact. And a few notes that I'd like to bring to the attention of council and our viewing audience, 2025's projected revenue of $7,531,000 would represent a decrease of $1.660 million over 2024's final revenue figure of $9.192 million, or an 18% decrease in revenues. Now, that comes with a caveat. 2024's final revenue figure of $9.192 million was also inflated by the receipt of $1.351,765 in FEMA grant money. If you remove this from the totals, it would bring our 2024 revenue down to $7,840,000. Even still, this would mean that there was a decrease in revenues between 2024 and 2025 of $308,861, which would actually increase to $406,861 when you consider the $98,000 in FEMA grants we received in 2025. In short, we experienced a 5.2% decrease in operating revenue year-over-year between 2024 and 2025. This decrease in revenues is primarily the result of the gradual completion of the River Point development construction. While this project again provided above-average figures for several revenue accounts, they decreased slightly in 2025 and will effectively return to pre-development figures in the 2026 budget year. And just a few examples of these, these revenue figures that we are going to see a precipitous drop-off in, moving forward in 2026. Let's look at real estate transfer tax. You can see in 2023, we had, we made $254,000 in revenue. 2024, we made $553,894 in real estate transfer tax revenue. Current year-to-date figure for 2025 is $531,716. However, our 2026 projected budget figure for this revenue is going to be $150,000. Second one, building permit fees. Again, a one-time shot in the arm in terms of revenue that you get when you have a large development, or any development, but the large 356-unit riverfront development, in this case. 2023, we had $510,000 and change in building permit fee revenue. 2024, $519,000 in building permit revenue. Year-to-date, we're at $420,000 and change. We will probably get close to, again, $500,000 by the year end. However, we are projecting only $125,000 in building permit revenue for next year. Third, miscellaneous non-recurring revenue. This is a revenue line item that includes the impact fees that the borough received as part of the River Point development. 2023, almost $180,000 in this. And for context, 2022, we received $14,000 if, for, in this, in this. And generally, when we aren't experiencing a large riverfront development, that number vacillates, generally somewhere between $20,000 and $50,000 for this line item. 2023, we got about $180,000. 2024, $224,000. Year-to-date, just shy of $227,000. 2026 projected budget figure, $50,000. And finally, and much smaller, but still tells the same story, use and occupancy permits. In 2023, this revenue line item was about $23,000. 24, $34,000. Year-to-date, this year, just shy of $35,000, $34,500. Our projected figure for 2026, $15,000. So the 2026 budget at this point, and while it is still in development, these are pretty, these are pretty solid projections for 2026, we're currently projecting a drop in revenue of $332,000 between these four categories. Lennar is projecting that there will only be 25 homes left in the River Point development to construct and complete in 2026. They plan to be completed by April or May of next year. However, the borough is going to receive all the permit fees for those properties by the end of this year, meaning there will not be any more of these one-time recur, these one-time fees, permit fees, use and occupancy fees, impact fees, any of that nature. We will be paid in full for River Point, the apartment building notwithstanding, by year end. The borough is projecting for increases in other revenue streams associated with River Point, however, namely the real estate tax and the earned income tax, albeit it's still muted figures. However, the sharp decrease in fee-based revenues means these will only bring incremental revenue growth in 2026. Incremental revenue growth does not pair well with external economic forces. The post-COVID economic landscape has seen unprecedented impacts on inflation, interest rates, and the cost and availability of equipment and materials. A good example of this is the contracted cost for residential trash and recycling collection, which will increase by 9.7% in 2026, rising from $821,184 to $901,188. And that is the borough-wide contracted cost to provide all residents with trash and recycling collection. Furthermore, an increase in population and developed land of this magnitude brings with it the need for additional staff, new equipment and vehicles, and increased maintenance costs. Additionally, there is the ongoing need to provide additional amenities and services to the community, like park upgrades and construction, acquisition and redevelopment of marginal properties, new municipal parking areas, repairs and upgrades to the sewer plant and system, just to name a few. Municipalities, just like our Bridgeport taxpayers, are faced with the same struggle, expenses increasing at a rate at which income does not keep pace, but still finding a way to provide a high quality of life. To deal with this challenge, elected officials and administration are faced with the following options. A, the increase of property tax rates. B, elect to take on debt service, i.e., loans or borrowing. Or C, budding, budding, budget-cutting measures. Typically, the correct formula involves a blend of these three options. Over the past five years, the growth Bridgeport has experienced by way of the riverfront development has assisted in providing sufficient revenue to continue providing a high quality of life without necessitating tax increases or significant budgetary cuts. 2025 marked the 16th consecutive year that Bridgeport was able to not increase property taxes for its residents and businesses. However, continuing in this pattern will ultimately create an inability to provide basic services at a high level to our residents and stakeholders at some point in the near future. Budget-cutting measures are always employed where it is possible. However, some parts of the budget simply cannot be cut. Essential costs, such as labor expenses, contracted costs, and supplies and materials continue to increase. So in short, 2025, like 24, was a year that saw the borough continue to receive healthier-than-projected revenues, much of which was fueled by fees associated with River Point development. However, these revenues plateaued, or will plateau, in 2025, and we will see a sharp decline in these revenues in 2026. Permit fee revenue is beneficial, but it is a one-time boost to revenues. To experience prolonged and sustained revenue increases annually, the growth cycle must be completed with the addition of new residents occupying these new homes adding to the existing tax base. Even then, the increase in recurring tax revenues is being analyzed to determine if these are sufficient to fund 2026 operating expenses and beyond. There are external factors, however, such as contracted costs like trash collection that leave the borough with no other options but to increase residential fees. In closing, just to provide everybody present and watching with a snapshot of where Bridgeport sits in terms of our overall municipal millage rate in the aggregate, and this is combining our local rate, our school district rate, and the county millage rate. You see up top, Sheltonham Township is number one overall in the county, dubious number one, but a number one overall, at 70.3672 mills, followed thereafter by Jenkentown, Pottstown, Norristown, Lower Moreland. Go all the way down to number 43, Bridgeport Borough is sitting at. We are currently 43 out of 62 municipalities in terms of where we sit with millage rates and what our taxpayers, our residents, our stakeholders, our business owners pay in property tax rates. So I think that, you know, Borough Council has been very responsible over the years in trying to, trying to mitigate against future increases, and this is, the proof is in the pudding. We are 43 out of 62 municipalities. Thank you for your time. I can field any questions that anybody might have. Next meeting, we will have the draft number one of the general and sewer funds, and we will, I look forward to presenting those. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for all the effort that you and staff put into this. Appreciate you kind of walking us through it. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just have a question. Is Lennar still building the apartment building in the spot that they have been leveling out across next to the brewery?
So Lennar is, Lennar only obtained the building rights to the homes. The developer, PRDC, is the overall property owner, so they owned the rights to sell off to, for the, for the homes and the rights to sell off the apartment complex.
I thought Lennar picked it up for the apartment building. Did they not do that?
They did not, no.
Okay, so that's just being developed but not built?
It's, from, from what, from what administration understands, the PRDC, the developers, are still looking for partners to, the interest rates are still prohibitive for them. They don't want to move forward, given what the, what the overall cost of construction is right now commensurate to what their rate of return would be. And they are potentially looking for either partners to join in and partner up with sharing the cost of development, or potentially selling that property off to another developer.
So that's just completely without, like, we're not including that at all in next year's budget for anything for that being built? It's completely off the plate?
We are not, and we cannot, and it, everyone shouldn't say we cannot. We are not, and we should not. It's not financially responsible, because we have no assurances or guarantees that, that that project will come out of the ground next year and that we will receive any related revenue for it.
Can I just keep this posted if you hear anything?
Absolutely.
But to that, anyone that's going to develop, it's only approved for that, so it's not like someone can come in and do something else that we didn't approve unless they come to us and...
I mean, they've been flattening that land for, like, eight months, and it's just dirt at this point. It's like, it looks like they're trying to do something, and it's like they just can't get their ducks in a row. It's kind of funny.
It's kind of funny.
Very flatter.
All right.
It's a great spot for a drone show.
All right, we can move on to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business anyone would like to discuss? All right, we can move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? All right, we move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Jackson's here.
Thank you. Just apologies to those who were excited about joining us for the estate planning program that was supposed to be held earlier this month. It was rescheduled due to the sporting events being televised that evening, so please put Thursday, November 20th at 6:30 PM on your calendars for the rescheduled date. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have chief's report. Chief?
Good evening, Bridgeport. First off, if something goes along the line of training and community integration, we're going to have our host, Emergency Operations Center, Basic Operations Class here in Borough Hall on November 12th, 6 to 8 PM. So, any of the persons that have assisted with emergency operations before and still would, if you could please get back to me. We have Al Condello, who's one of our deputy EMCs, going to put on the class, and the rest will be virtual. So, it's like a four-hour block. We're only going to do two hours. The rest is going to be virtual, so it'll be no fuss, no muss, and not difficult. So, it's a chance and an opportunity for us that have worked together before and some new faces to get together again. So, please get back to me at chief@bridgeportpd.com for all those people that are out in the viewing world, or give us a call to the police department. I know that, want to thank Detective Sergeant Murphy for his leadership for the Halloween Parade. He was really helpful in doing the community or the physical security aspects of that. He did spend a lot of time, so I wanted to thank him for that. Reminding people that they're right turn only off of Ross Road and off of West Fifth Street for the two-hour block in the morning, two-hour block in the afternoon, it's signage, so please adhere to that. We've had our officers out there conducting enforcement to help with that. We're also conducting surveys for flow, traffic flows off of both roadways to get an updated amount of what the high times are, how much our traffic flows are off of that and off of West Valley Forge Road on that blinking light to stay ahead of things with traffic. I understood that there were some concerns over social media regarding the shooting in West Norton Township two Fridays ago on the 17th, involving the, a couple outlaw motorcycle gangs, and the concern that there was activity in Bridgeport off of DeKalb Street and Ninth and DeKalb, and there was no shooting in Bridgeport. We, because our officers are on top of things, intercepted some people that were involved in a crime in another jurisdiction, and hopefully we will help them because of that interception help resolve the issues from another jurisdiction. So, I just wanted to let you know with surety that there was no shooting here. We just helped out. Just when we look at our normal statistics for, we had about a 69% clearance by arrest rate for last month, the month of September. Just to give you an idea about what kind of things that the officers do, there was four warrant arrests. There was, in the last, the last two weeks, four warrant arrests, six retail theft arrests, domestic-related arrests, there were four, and some juvenile issues, first, juvenile fights at bus stops and at Memorial Park. Both of those were referred to our officers and our juvenile officers and with the parents, because with anything else, we help, school teachers, police officers, and government officials help, but it's really for the family to raise their, to raise their children, and we have great relationships. So, we look forward to, if you have any problems, if there's something between neighbors or family that you need some assistance with mediation, please contact us. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it. I had some neighbors who were very concerned about the incident, and they're worried, and you were able to respond to me, letting people know, so the notification helps a lot. I know people were concerned about what was going on, that you can't report on things until you know anything, and I appreciate that there wasn't false information going out, like rumors and innuendo during that, because that could have really made people less safe. So, I'm grateful to the police that we're able to be there on a quick basis, and I think a lot of that has to do with the relationships that not only your department has with other departments, but we know that from the fire department as well, that it's all mutual working relationships, and that's how it works. It's keeping people safe, not just here, but in West Norton and everywhere else.
Thank you, Vice President Howes, and I'm remiss, I have it written down here, but about the fire on Front Street between the, all of the borough operations, fire department, police department. Mr. Brandy, who owns the shop, is injured. I know that if there are people that have an interest, there is a GoFundMe page on GoFundMe, but Mr. Brandy has been a stalwart business owner for the last 35 years and been from around here for longer than that. So, if that's your choosing, do your research on that, and perhaps you can help the Brandy family.
Thank you, chief. All right, we can move on to new business. Are there any items of new business? See, there's none. We can move on to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements? I know I had a quick one just to kind of review. On last Thursday, the Montgomery County Women's Commission had their first event here in Bridgeport. We were really honored to host them. We had about 52 business owners and entrepreneurs from around the county come here, with facilitators and experts from the county that helped get funding, accounting services, and legal services, and all kinds of really great spaces, or really great space provided for businesses. I just wanted to thank them for coming to Bridgeport and for all the business owners that attended as well.
I'll just add, I saw some people who aren't from Bridgeport who posted about that afterwards, and I think that really enhances the reputation of our borough, so people notice it. So, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
It looked so nice in here with all the tables in the pink. It was perfect.
Yeah, it was completely vended by Bridgeport businesses as well, women-owned Bridgeport businesses, which I think was fantastic, and they did a really wonderful job.
Looking forward to more events like that here.
Yeah, likewise, that's the idea.
And President, it was, actually, your speech was inspiring, so that was excellent. I watched that, and well done, well done for a lot of different things you've been involved with recently, but that was inspiring, truly.
Appreciate the support, chief. I mean, everything that we said was true, and the speech was inspired, if anyone hadn't seen it, by the woman in the room. So, we talked about how the business owners are really the heartbeat of our community and that we couldn't do anything without them, and how the business owners in Bridgeport are not here to take or make money as much as they're here to support the community, feed our kids, and make sure that everybody here has a great, you know, a great quality of life. So, everything in the speech was just factual, I'm just saying the facts. Thank you for the call out. All right, we can move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment this evening? All right, we can certainly entertain adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. It's 8:48.